And now I kill Athena.
Do it pussy.
First of all you blind me by just teleporting out, so I can't fucking do anything. Alright.
Yeah?
Yeah when... When she said that Malius didn't know he would get shot and I was like "Hamski fucking said that!" How can I fucking... how can I know that shit and fucking Malius the smartass can't fucking know that shit? I think I sounded like a toddler though when I was like "wuh wuh wuh wuh" Motherfucker! I can't believe this shit!
What did Hamski think by the way about uh... Athena trying to let him speak?
Uh... confusion. And then, then... oh no! I got nothing really to say besides yell at her. Uh, I didn't really prepare anything. I had a list and Nemesis said like a few words that summed it all up and I was like "fuck". But then Nemesis brought in two unrelated individuals and I was, the whole time I was thinking "oh my fucking god these evil motherfuckers are about to murder them in front of me and it's gonna be on my conscience" like...
Dude I was ready. I was ready to eat them.
Jasmine was like a... was a Whisperer, so Hamski was thinking "These are two fucking innocent motherfuckers that are just trying to survive in District Zero, not even the ones that caused the problem." So that was on Hamski's mind when he had the little outburst like "if you fucking kill the-" backing Lono? That, I think that was... Smart on Hamski's part, I think? Cause he was afraid they were gonna get murdered, right in front of him? And that wouldn't even be justice. Just an example. I need like an alley. A longer alley, going this way.
Longer alley?
It would try to expand the map so that it's like... There's more places to go instead of like a straight line. Like when that shit popped off yesterday, I was just trapped in the garage section of the map. Teddy is telling me to hug you.
I'm wondering by the way... Oh. Okay. I'm wondering by the way... Uh, do you have any light probes in here? Because we're red.
Uh, I don't know why. It's the red... Oh... Bro, I think a light probe from up in the Rippen Chip, which is up there, is coming down here.
Then you need to have some spacer probes in between, in the void.
Yeah, I didn't really look.
Or not in the void, actually reinforce here because... We should be green.
I haven't touched anything in here. I don't even know if there are light probes in here. That might be the issue there. I don't think there is.
I am changing in color over here, I'm getting slightly darker, but that could also be just light probes from above and about the area. Or somewhere else.
Okay.
I mean it's not super important, it's a spawn box, but you know.
I've been dealing with occlusion issues, like... I don't know why, look through this wall! I don't know why some of this shit is like, it's like my occlusion's not working fully? And now, that's never been an issue. I don't know why there's like light posts and shit showing. It's just random shit. It's like the baking didn't work properly.
No, it definitely didn't work because stuff is disappearing but inconsistently.
There's, I think this is where the crack is, so I gotta like, expand it or something? No wait, shit's over here showing too. It's annoying. Having so many issues.
On your... Occlusion spacers?
Bro, those meetings get me so fucking tense though. I'm like shaking when I get in there. Also, you teleporting to the top of the chair.
Yeah?
I was like "damn", did you see me go like this? I looked at them, then I looked at Nemesis and then I looked up at the fucking... Top of the chair that he was sitting in, like I was thinking about it? Like just climb up there.
You wanted to climb up!
I want a seat too!
Alright, go in and I'll give you a minute.
Wait, I wanna turn on music.
You know what, that's not a bad idea.
I've been listening to... Low tension cyberpunk music. It's got like a heartbeat sound when shit's getting really tense. Okay. Also, I don't know, I think you told me? Hold on, what the fuck? I think you told me, but I switched my OBS to... Admin mode? And I haven't dropped frames today. I think that was the reason why, I'm not sure. Alright, I'm going in. Oh, who is in my house? Hey, motherfucker! Oh!
I knocked.
I didn't hear shit, I was outside! Fuck.
Hi.
Sorry, what are you doing here?
I'm here to pack my things.
Okay. Right up there.
Okay. Sorry if I'm... Disturbing you right now.
No, I just got back. Are you serious?
Yeah, we talked about this, didn't we?
Yeah. I thought... I have a fucking grenade in there that could blow up the entire... Block, I think. I don't remember what it's called. Look, I... Think I put it in there cause it looked like the safest place? It's like a holy bomb or something. Was that...
Why is that in there?
Uh, it seemed like the safest place and someone gave it to me. Which I should've used it against the Aether, but I didn't.
Okay, you can keep the box. But I'll take everything else.
So where are you moving?
To base.
A- again?
No, not the outpost. There's a fear in base.
Don't you need... Time to get away?
What do you mean? I'm here now, I have to work.
Can't work 24/7.
Why are you telling me this?
Cause I'm trying to... Build something and people keep leaving. And also I had a breakdown recently and I realize I can't work... 24/7, or I'm gonna... Collapse. And now you're going... To live where you work. Which I know firsthand is not a good thing.
Hamski... You know what's dangerous if I stay here?
It's already dangerous. Fucking councilman got shot. What do you do that makes it more dangerous? If anything it gives us... Something that helps.
I'm a commander in the ZMF. What do you think will happen once the bad guys find out about that?
Everyone down here is bad in some regard. And there are people that... Don't understand that. They didn't have a shady past, or they did and they are just fucking absolute hypocrites. You understand us. Whether that... Whether people understand that or not. I at least trust you enough... To help us, and I would defend you. And if other people don't wanna... Trust you right away because you're a cop, or you're in the military, or you're in the ZMF, which everyone is afraid of, you are a representative of the ZMF. You can prove them wrong. You can prove that they're not here to start a war, that they're not here to kill everyone, that they're here to help, and maybe even stop... The council from... Doing what they did last week. Maybe even pitting each other against each other just to... Throw us into the crossfire. We need someone like you and I have always thought that even you being a police officer... Helps. Cause we have someone to talk to when... Schmidt... Comes.
You're right. Maybe I'm just trying to get away from emotional attachment. I'm sorry that I even thought about it. It's just... There's a lot going through my mind right now, Hamski, I'm sorry.
There's a lot going through mine too.
I don't want you guys to get hurt because of me, that's really it.
I was just... Recently every time I speak someone probably could get hurt because of what I say. So I understand that too. But I believe you want something good for... Everything, for everyone here. I want something good for everyone here. And I know when you said you were leaving... I felt dead inside and I wanted to leave again. I don't think... Being attached to things is a bad thing. It... Possibly encourages us to be better.
You're the most honest... Guy I've ever met in my entire life. I truly... Truly wish mercy upon the ones that are trying to harm you. And even more mercy for the ones that succeed doing so. I'll stay.
I'm glad. I was gonna-
I wanna show you something.
I was gonna use this as a last ditch effort, just I expanded this photo of you and I was gonna... I was gonna guilt trip you.
Honestly that would've probably worked.
What were you gonna... Say?
I wanna show you something that came in today.
Okay? Is it... Oh fuck. Alright, yeah. Show me.
Let's go down to the street.
Also I'm lying about something. Well I chose not to say something. I was at a council meeting, the Fear City Council meeting earlier. Just... Thirty minutes ago.
Okay. Don't feel obligated to tell me anything about it. But if you want to, you can.
I actually think you could help. I was siding with a cop in there. Cause I thought they were gonna do something bad.
A cop?
Uh... Lono.
Lono? She was at a council meeting?
Uh... She was... I think like me and a few others trying to keep the peace. And when something happened... Because of the thing that happened in the street. She was defending people that were probably most likely innocent. Or people that would've been like me or Jasmine in the past.
Figured. She's that kinda person.
I don't know who in that room is manipulating us, or who's telling the truth.
Alright. What I'm about to show you doesn't cause any structural damage. But... Like I told you in the past, ZMF is crowd control. What I have in my hand... Is a mana grenade, or MD, for mana drain. It's a grenade that when you get hit by... It strips you of the mana you need to cast defenses or offenses. For longer than an hour.
What about someone that's... Made of mana, or it fuels them? Does it kill them?
It doesn't strip you entirely, nope. Quick and easy.
Can I have one?
No.
What? I'm not gonna, okay, you said I'm very truthful, I will sneak in and I will steal one.
You won't get them.
There was a guy at the Anson that tried to offer me help and then scowled in my face and he was like a god or something. Just one. Just let me make him feel like me for one second.
Those are high-tech weapons from the upper city, you're not getting your hands on that.
Yeah, I get it, I can't control it, I'm too stupid, I understand.
Additionally to that, we have something actually very similar to the Purple Lotus. Bracelets... Or more handcuffs. But after we use these... Betties? We're gonna put on handcuffs... And um... Well, then we have quietness in terms of magic for the entire duration these handcuffs are on. Pretty handy, I would say.
Would you rap with the councilman?
Not to the extent where they would bribe me.
No, I mean... If a councilman was cracking down on criminals...
Oh well, I would most definitely support that. If it's done the right way, that is.
Also, I wanna talk to this councilman... About the methods they take, because someone like me... I do things to survive. I'm hoping they're not cracking down too hard when the real problem is structural. I actually feel like... The ZMF can help? Maybe?
Okay.
I just don't know how the council will feel about any of that.
Well... I don't know, maybe next time you go to one of those fancy council meetings... Have me on your shoulder, how about that?
They'll know it's a ZMF member probably. Sachi knew.
And that's totally fine. In my book.
Alright. Next time. Throw it again.
Everything's still fresh. What do you mean throw it again? You know how expensive these are?
Throw, I want to see... I'm the weakest person out here and... It's nice to see something that could potentially help.
If I throw one more... I'm gonna get dinner and you pay.
I can definitely afford...
No hamburgers. I want pasta.
Okay, throw it.
Well that's 2000 credits down the drain.
You're making me pay to- Oh my fucking god! That's...
Come on, let's get inside, we're... Standing in the-
Look, that might be gone soon. Aw, fuck. Damn it. I was having a pollution device made... But I've cancelled the deal with the person involved because they're, the Whisperers shot Malius in the street and... The Whisperers are... Working with District Zero.
So, the person you, uh... Okay, I understand.
Well that sucks. Look, the meat rack has always done things on our own, now we just... We do this on our own. Can I have, can I buy one?
No! No!
I could afford those.
That is military gear!
Okay, I'm not gonna say I'm thinking about pulling a heist on them already. Alright.
That's a fight you won't win, fucking Hamsky.
I'm just thinking... That's extremely useful. Wait. What are you doing? Let me put this back. I'm not stealing anything, what the fuck? Alright. There.
What do you like better, blue or red?
On what?
My hair, dumbass.
Oh, I thought it's... I'm wearing red and you're wearing blue, so I thought it was like a criminals or cops thing. Blue. Reds? Reds? More dangerous, I guess.
I guess red is perfect, then.
Oh god, okay.
Don't worry, I like to dye my hair from time to time.
I'm well aware.
I won't go for green, though. I don't wanna look like JC.
Okay, fuck purple and fuck... Green.
Hey! Purple is my natural hair color, man, come on!
So, we're done with those colors. Never again. And if I see any motherfuckers with green and purple, anything... Fucking immediately, I just hate them.
Damn! Does that mean I constantly have to dye my hair now?
Wait, is your hair, your original hair color is purple?
I just said that!
Sorry. I'm a, I'm a doofus. Look, it's a certain brand of purple. I think it's fine. It's fine.
Alright, whatever you say.
I... There's a staff meeting tomorrow, I just remembered.
Ooh, what are those?
Well, uh, more like the security is... Setting up for things. Making the streets safer.
Okay. That's good.
So, you're actually staying? Am I dreaming, actually?
No. I will get my pasta.
Oh, yeah. Well, I have a staff meeting soon, so... It's in about... Eight, twelve, fourteen hours or something, so I, I need to prepare.
You know, I... I actually write stuff down, so...
Are you waiting right now for the pasta? Is that what's going on?
I mean, no, but-
Are you hungry right now?
I will get pasta. Well, I can, I can still order.
You, you wanna Uber Eats right now?
At some point, you're gonna get me a pasta. That's all.
I-
Maybe even in a nice restaurant.
What nice restaurant are you talking about?
I don't know, there are plenty out there!
I can't believe I even have $2,000 to jokingly say I'm gonna pay for pasta with when I know that I'm not gonna, cuz I'm gonna push this off as far- Oh god, I really am truthful. Okay. I... If you wanna get pasta... We're going to Fazoli's. Fazoli's is really cheap. It's like Red Lobster. It's fancy for poor people. Okay. What, right now?
Why not?
Okay, I'm not broke. I have been saving money. I'll... Do you know a fancy fucking restaurant? Cuz I don't. Fuck that shit.
I do. There's one in the garden.
You know, I pay my employees now 2,000 a day? This is a full workday for one person.
You wanted me to throw another MD, so I-
This is insane. I, and I didn't even get to throw it myself. It feels good to be angry about this instead of like dead inside after.
Yeah. So what are you gonna get?
I'm not. I'm just gonna sit there and watch, I guess, cuz I don't wanna spend another 2,000 on it.
You what? You wanna be awkward and just watch me eat? What the hell, Hamsky?
You want me to spend 4,000 on food?
Oh my god. Can't you not just have dinner with me? Come on.
That's a lot of fucking money.
Hamsky is such a Mr. Craps. I swear to god.
He doesn't spend his own money! It feels wrong, dude. Oh my god. I was trying to think of things I could tell Venus about the council meeting. Then I was, yeah, I was sitting there thinking, "Oh, fuck." What if this all bites Hamsky in the ass? He's not supposed to say this shit to them?
How do you like the mana grenade?
It's fucking awesome! It should have a bigger effect, I think. A wider range. Maybe. Unless you, maybe too powerful, actually.
Well, you gotta consider that... I'm not gonna be the only one who has these.
Oh my god. Wait- Are they a thousand credits or 2,000 credits per?
Thousand per.
Oh, fuck. So you can't just like throw them everywhere? Actually, Upper Zephira's probably rich.
I love these things. They're cool. They're so satisfying to just throw.
I noticed it was displaced, or like the, the air around it is... Wait, was I crazy? Throw it again? Like, throw it over there. Oh yeah, the, it's like blurry in the... The sparks or something. So I, I was looking at it, like... Actually, maybe it should have an aftereffect? Throw it again, when it, after it explodes, it should have like a... A blur effect, like something's happening in the air. Cuz I can kind of see that, but I think it's just the particles.
Yeah? I was also thinking about maybe, uh, uh... Some, uh, charge-up particles, like... You know, like going inwards when you throw it?
Yeah.
Uh, it's kinda, it's kinda designed after the Magnuson Device from Half-Life 2, Episode 2.
It looks great, though.
Thank you.
Also, it's like a, it's a balanced way to... Even the playing field in a like desperate situation. I like it. Also, I, uh... I thought it, it... I thought of Hamsky having like a relic device or something as a weapon? But I, I feel like it would make him too powerful or something? Like, if you just hit someone with the sword and it like goes in, no matter what? He would only use it in like emergencies. Like, barely ever use it just like a threat, but I think it'd be too much for Hamsky. I'd look like a...
Smoke!
What restaurant has 1,000 credit fucking lasagna pasta?
I don't know.
Bruh, I like how you immediately knew I was thinking the value meal. I, I can cry, didn't it?
Today was fun, though. Today was a lot of fun.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I want a teleport still. Yours is cool, where you just beam out and then... Show back up somewhere else. Not a teleport, but a fast speed type thing.
Actually... Once I got the time, I want to revamp, uh, Haibha Luna. And I wanna make her... More... Uh, more chi-based instead of copying the exact Assassin's Kit.
Mm-hmm.
From Blade and Soul. Because if you think about it, here in the metaverse, I have a little bit more leeway with the abilities than I have in the Black Rem RP, because in Black Rem, I keep everything original.
Yeah? Oh. Speaking... Actually, I don't know if... I'm supposed to know something, hold on. Oh, fuck. Yo, why is my... Oh my god, never mind. I was gonna mute my stream, but I have to get up and do it, so never mind. But I'm gonna do a 24-hour thing, I think, in... I'm planning it. And I even PM'd Kirby to see if they would set up a lobby of Orlando Saka so we could like travel between during the 24-hour. Uh-
Oh.
The only problem is I'm 3:30 AM to... To like 4:00 PM EST on Sunday is blank. There is nothing there. So I was like... How the fuck do we fill that slot? And no one hosts anything around then, and even Kirby can't do that. But I was gonna do 3:30 AM to... 3:30 AM, so that I could go to the Anson to end it, instead of like... Like after, like the first time we did the 24-hour, we, um... The end was the worst part. It was definitely the most difficult, cuz everyone dropped off. So if I end at the Anson-
So you're gonna go to the Anson dead tired?
Yeah. Cuz it's usually my dead tired time anyway.
You, you're gonna be breaking one of the PL rules.
Falling asleep?
No sleeping in the lobby.
Sachi will understand. I'll, I'll just be sitting at the shrine, just... Fall out of my chair.
I don't think he would have any problems with you passing out. He didn't even have problems with me passing out. I have never done it before, but almost.
I have never fallen asleep in a-
Child Calypso.
Wait, no wait. One time I did in Discord, but no one was around me, so it was simple. I still need to get my... Oh. Here. I still need to get my, um... This ability? But I already have this on, I just need to roleplay it? I've got this... On my back. So...
Yeah?
So, Hamsky might have heightened... Reaction times, but it's like a quick way to do things, and it's the way that would hurt more than anything, so eventually I'll probably have it removed and then just... Chi. Uh, like trusting yourself.
Yeah? Also, let me know whenever you wanna see the, uh, illusion of Hornsby again, to guide you.
Oh, okay. I also wanted to... I was hoping Hamsky could go on like a minor vacation again and go to the Calypso's place. The...
Yeah, I'm still waiting for that to be done myself. Cuz I'm not in charge of that! That's Dexter!
Yeah. I... I really want the sap ability, cuz I think it'd be a good like a motion thing? Where, and then it's like, this implant is like hindering things, so it's not... It's not a fully positive thing. It saps and then it goes into the other arm and I have like a one punch and it's done, so it's not like...
Uh-huh.
I don't think that chi would be impeded by the implant, by going this way. At least, that's how I'm imagining it. Yeah, but-
Yeah?
I can't wait to get that.
Yeah, there's also a lot of things I can't wait for with the Shrine Arc, but we'll have to wait.
I'm always stressed out.
I'll be hopping out.
I, well, it was fun.
It was a lot of fun.
Yes, it was.
Yeah? Adios, Hamsky.
Smooches. Tell Sachi I love him.
Smoochish. Yeah. And I love you, Hamsky.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Alright, um... I'm gonna end stream. That was fun, and I didn't drop any frames. Why the fuck? Bro, does anyone have this issue with... What the... Does anyone have this issue with, uh, desktop in VR? Where if you click on something, it just like brings up... The tablet view... Of your desktop? I don't know if that makes sense. Here, actually, I can show it. No, I can't. I have to get up and fucking- God damn it. This is what my Discord, or my SteamVR does, when I click on stuff. Does anyone know why it does this? It's so annoying. Wait, are you fucking shitting me? I'm dropping frames now, after I said that? What the fuck happened? I didn't drop frames until I said that. This is some bullshit. Oh. Think switching to... This version fucked things up. Alright, let's raid someone. Oh my god. Uh, Ribbonheart, obl- ooh, hold on. Is Aegis open? I wonder how many people are at Aegis? I may as well go. Alright, I'm gonna go to Aegis. Oh, fuck, I gotta request access in... Discord. Requesting access. Space. Oh, I had to buy a new fucking Trackstrap Plus, so I'm waiting for that. My hip is gonna die soon. So annoying. Wonder how many people are in this lobby? Ah, god! Sorry.